We stand to pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Graven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Would anybody like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 16th, 2024, and bills and payroll for the last half of April 2024. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and roll call.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council tonight? If you would, please come up to the mic. We might have somebody online. Uh, so.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you fine here, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I was here last spring and.
Well, let's start with the name and just for the record.
My name is Mrs. Edwards. I am here on behalf of the Coles County Council on AG. Um, I was here last spring and talked to all of you about our services at the agency. Um, and would just like to start off by thanking the city of Mattoon and the council for your continuous financial support for our agency. I don't wish for my request today to overshadow the gratitude that we have for the city of Mattoon. Um, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago to the commissioners and to Mayor Hall and, um.
You said, by the way, just for the record, we won't count this on your time, but I blocked her call and it did not come to me. I really did not.
Is what is that?
Yeah, okay.
Send out that email. I hope all of you got it. If you did not, please let me know. Um, I just wanted to come and address the funding that the city of Mattoon provides to the council. Um, in 2017, our funding got cut by the city of Mattoon from $33,000 a year to $1,000 a year. Um, since then, we have also had several other funding cuts from other sources. And this, uh, with inflation, operational expenses, minimum wage increase have all resulted in a tremendous financial strain for our agency. Um, we have been able to bounce back a little bit from that, especially after COVID. Um, if you look in that email, you will see the numbers, um, associated with the residents of Mattoon for our services. One of the services we provide is the Dial-A-Ride Public Transportation Program. And this is a program that we are struggling with financially to come up with our local match requirement for our grants through IDO. Um, for example, in 2019, the Dial-A-Ride program denied a total of 251 trips in Gold County. In the last 12 months, we've denied 1,843 trips in Gold County. The city of Mattoon is by far our largest service area, so those numbers are reflective of the entire county, but like I said, a large portion of those come from Mattoon residents. So I just wanted to come today to ask you to review the email that I sent and the funding request and reconsider the funding amount that you allowed to our agency. And if you have any questions or want to have further conversations, please get in touch. I have a fiscal director and some reporting directors here for world and words. We thank you for your great attention. You guys have any questions?
Anything, anybody?
I do have a brief comment, just saying, you know, every dollar that we give to Dial-A-Ride is matched by $3. So effectively, I mean, you're able to maximize your contribution, which then leads to increased transportation opportunities for our residents and for residents in Coles County. So.
That was, that was kind of my direction. Um, Kim was at some, you had mentioned the, the matching funds for Dial-A-Ride. Is that correct? How, how much is, what is the cost of that to, to match those funds?
The cost to match those funds? So in that email I sent out, um, and I know I don't think all of you got it. I think I just sent it to commissioners, but just for Mattoon residents to utilize just our Dial-A-Ride service, which is just a portion of what our agency does. Um, in fiscal year 23, after our grants paid what they would pay, we still had to come up with $250,000, a little over $250,000, um, of funding. Because the, the grant will pay for 65% and then we are responsible for 35% of local match. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
So what, when does your fiscal year begin or has it already?
Our fiscal year begins July 1st.
Okay.
You know, uh, anybody have, Dave, did you?
No, go ahead. Okay.
When we cut costs, our costs before, we were not able to balance our budget either. And shame on us, we've done a lot better. And, and I appreciate you coming here and we, of course, you know, we can't make, we can't make a decision tonight.
Absolutely.
But I, I can tell you that I think, uh, I don't want to speak for the whole council, but we feel very positive about the organization and we feel, at least I feel like that we ought to help out some more. And I think we can probably do something this year, uh, even though we're, you know, we're starting on our, you know, our next fiscal year. But so it was, I'm going to tell you that I, I think we're going to be able to work something out. I don't know if we'll be able to reach the exact amount you want right away, uh, because we're going to, we would have to modify our budget, but there may be people wanting to do that. I don't know yet. Uh, but I think we can do something for you. So we do appreciate you coming. Anybody?
Just a couple of questions. It looks like your numbers or your, your rides and your requests are going up.
Yes.
And then it sounds like your fulfillment is dropping.
Yes. The need for the service is rising. The resources are either stagnant or reduced.
Okay. Do you get any, uh, any support from any, like some of the healthcare organizations or Bush or?
We have service contracts with them, which, um, service contracts are something that we can use for match for our grants. Um, so we have a service contract with several local nursing homes and Lysander Bush. We don't get any additional funding other than that.
Is there, is there a cap to your matching?
Yeah. Most of our additional funding comes from, um, Coles County, the city of Charleston, city of Mattoon, our township, things like that.
It's a great program. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wood, uh.
Go ahead.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make any statements? Rest of the audience and anybody online?
We have one person.
Anybody online have any questions for the council? Any statements? Okay, so, uh, ready to go on to, uh, new business.
I motioned to adopt ordinance number 2024-5481, renaming Woodell Drive as shown on the Emerald Lakers' final plat to Woodell Way within the city of Mattoon.
Could I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Clausen and, um, any comments, Dave, you'd like to make as to why we're doing this?
Well, you know, it might, you might think it's semantics, but it's really not. Um, if you know Ken Woodell, um, he had a certain way about him, um, both from a communication and the way he treated people, et cetera, and talking to the family. This was just an appropriate way to really honor him, um, on behalf of the city.
Now, of course, we, we, um, we, we had talked to the family. We, I mean, I think some of this come up at the last minute. We'd already made an adjustment, so we're really just trying to really fix something, I think, a little bit.
That's right.
That's great.
Okay.
That's fine.
Anybody else have any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
A motion to approve council decision request 2024-2477, awarding the bid in the amount of $21,350 from Mid Illinois Concrete Inc. for the PCC Concrete.
A second on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and any comments anybody has on this? Anybody? Uh, if none, uh, roll call.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
A motion to approve council decision request 2024-2478, approving the temporary employment of Larry Cole as a seasonal construction inspector at a pay rate of $50 an hour.
Second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox and any discussion comments here? Anything?
I'll just say, you know, we're, we're short a couple of staff now with the retirement of Dan McLean. We've got a lot of construction projects that are really getting ready to start. One already started on Broadway and we just need somebody with some seasonal, uh, spending expense out there that can oversee the, mainly the sports complex program project, which should start before the.
And I think you looked at potentially using a contractor or a contractor and that was really a lot more expensive.
It'd be a lot more, exactly.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh, roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2479, awarding the bid in the amount of $135,025 from Nico Asphalt Company for the installation of a paved Lake Mattoon Marina parking lot.
And a second to that motion?
No, second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps and any comments on this?
Basically, they came in, uh, you know, $5,000 under budget, uh, so that was really exciting for us. We were able to tack on, uh, actually paving out the, uh, kayak launch as well. Uh, so, you know, they were the low bid and, uh, we're happy to have them.
And assuming, Mayor, this is approved, Nico would like to start this project in two weeks and once they pave it, it'll, it'll sit for two to three days. So there's a chance that it could be, uh, finished before Memorial Day weekend when we get a lot of traffic out there. It'd be a very, very good look.
Good, good.
For the lake, lake area.
Okay, any other comments? A roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yep.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2480, awarding the bid in the amount of $64,245 from JLS Marine Incorporated for the Lake Mattoon Boat Access Area Development parentheses B A A D ADA kayak launch project.
And a second to that motion?
No, second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, any comments on this one?
Same deal, uh, just different grant. Uh, they came in $1,000 under budget and, uh, they were the, uh, only bidder. We put out, uh, you know, adequate notice for all of these and, uh, you know, while we didn't get as much bids as we were hoping for, uh, we still feel that, you know, JLS Marine is a good company and we're happy to partner with them and we thank them for their bid.
Dave. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Motion to approve council decision request 2024-2481, approving the bid plans and specifications for the West Pavilion roof replacement, fishing pier installation, and picnic table procurement.
And a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox, any comments on that?
These are just the, uh, bid specs. Uh, if this is approved tonight, we'll have, uh, notice in the paper and, uh, should be good to go.
Hey, I got a question. Yes. On the, on the graphic, it looks like your fishing pier is going to be next to another fishing pier. Will there be two out there then?
No, so that's not a fishing pier. It's actually a really old dock, uh, that probably needs to be replaced at some point.
So removal of that's not involved?
It's not involved, no.
Okay. Zach, will that, will that encumber the construction of the pier?
No, no, not at all.
And Alex on this Ozland Grant with the previous, uh, motion, the first $300,000, that is not a city match. That is our first $300,000 to use.
Yep, yep, so they give us a reimbursement. I just filed for that today, uh, and so basically we should expect to receive that money within a week or two, uh, through Amplifun.
Good deal. Good work.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, roll call.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Uh, I move to adopt a special ordinance 2024-1902, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Central Illinois Land Bank Authority and the city of Mattoon to address vacant, abandoned, and deteriorating properties. Uh, can I have a second on that part, on that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, um, you're probably closest to this.
Yep, this is a huge deal for Mattoon. This is the whole reason why we have joined the land bank, uh, by signing this intergovernmental agreement. It allows us to participate, uh, with the land bank through their abandonment process. Right now, we're not a home rule community and so effectively, uh, if we sign this, we will now through Silva have the authority, uh, granted by both Champaign County and Decatur being members of Silva to have a piece of home rule authority. So an abandonment process that would normally take up to three, four years would take about eight months. Uh, it's a huge opportunity for us to be able to literally acquire these problem properties in town, uh, that have either two years of unpaid water bills where they're overdue or two years of delinquent taxes. And so if those two criterias are met, we can effectively take ownership of these properties as the land bank, not as the city, and then sell them to a responsible developer that's willing to rehab the property. Uh, it's just a great way where, you know, let's say there's a property that doesn't need to be knocked down, but it's a problem. We're able to now circumvent that process and actually come up with solutions for residents. So it's a huge deal for Mattoon.
Any other comments?
Does this include properties that would be demoed?
It could.
Torn down as well?
Okay.
It's not just rehab, it's.
They, they could be torn down.
Yeah, they could be.
And then redeveloped.
Yep, okay.
And you don't have to sell it for the, um.
80%. Yeah. Yeah, so basically we would be able to give properties to Habitat for a dollar if we wanted.
Yeah.
So how is this going to affect or will it affect Beth for, um, to go after these unpaid water bills that we've got with that, with state or?
So it's just a qualifying criteria.
I think it can be given the address, the account.
So I mean, but if they're two years unpaid water and we go in with this, does that prohibit us from going after them for payment of that?
No, they still work. They still work.
Okay, okay. I just want, I don't want to mess up the ability to go back and collect with this program that we're on, right? If. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
Department reports, uh, Kyle Gill is not here, the city administrator, but I've got a couple of comments. Kyle is taking care of his daughter's college and he'll be back tomorrow. But a couple of things that, uh, he's been working on, AEP grant related to the sports complex, sanitary sewer also related to the sports complex. And, uh, there's some activity about, uh, the city potentially getting some grants for, for charging stations for automobiles. And, uh, we're still, still working on that, uh, but it looks like we might be able to qualify, uh, that grant application. It's due Friday and we should be able to meet that date. Uh, we will give an update to the council and there should not be any exposure for the city of Mattoon. It's an 80% grant. Uh, our matching is 20. That will be matched by somebody else, uh, through another source and, uh, we'll, we'll have a chance to talk about that before, before we make any commitments. Okay, and let's see, uh, what else is going on with Kyle? Uh, I know he's been working on a couple of solar projects and, um, and also, uh, yeah, so, uh, particularly a solar project related to the wastewater treatment plant and the possibility of getting some, some help there. I think that's all I've really got, uh, for Kyle. So the next one is Dan Jones, city attorney.
Uh, we had a hearing yesterday on the brown shoe matter. Um, there had been some activity out there. They did get a lot of stuff torn down, but then about Tuesday last week, things just stopped. Apparently the guy hired to tear down the, the property has had an argument with the owner, don't know what's going on, but no one showed up yesterday in court. So the judge did find the defendant to be in contempt of court, has ordered the manager of the LLC that owns it to appear here in Mattoon at city court on June 3rd. That's how he can purge himself of contempt. If he does not appear, judge is going to order him to be arrested. And as said, he will sit in jail until the property's down, until the property's down. So, uh, both Sam and Ryan have expressed a great interest in going to get the guy because he lives in Kansas City, but, uh.
Road trip.
So we'll see how it goes. We also had a phone conference on Black and Bush today and unfortunately, uh, it just got continued basically till Monday, the 20th, so I'll report more on that next meeting. So.
But some good movements certainly on, uh, that's going to definitely get his attention as far as the.
I hope so.
Brown Shoe Building. Yeah, okay. Any, any questions for Dan? Uh, next is city clerk Susan O'Brien.
Um, just business as usual.
Okay, finance, Beth Wright?
Oh, I took the first of the revenue close out, she's the 24th, she's 24, end of the year, down some the prior year, about $128,000. Then there were three areas that had come in so far, I mean, in May, this was 25, that would be the second sheet, 24, 25. Uh, gaming money came in from May, less than the prior year's sales tax, those numbers just came in today, um, up from the prior year and first, I think that's down quite a bit from the prior year.
Okay.
And, uh, the under circulation general fund, um, today is 10.6 million. You know, at the last meeting it was 12.26. And a big reason for the dairy and so we took money, you know, the budget, put 375,000 in just mobile equipment fund, um, paid 300,000 back involving loan fund, we transferred 500,000 to capital projects fund and then also moved 232,000 for each out of general fund into the capital project.
All right.
That's, unless there are questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Beth? Okay, uh, next is Dave Clark, probably works director.
Well, we had our first, our, not my first, I was, it was my first cleanup day last Saturday. I thought it went really well. Uh, want to thank, try to thank everybody that participated and helped out there. We could have used a few more hands, make sure Phipps was there helping for a while.
Right, I'm impressed.
There we go. I didn't want you to drive by and not see me there.
I avoided that area.
But, uh, I do think it went really well. We, I didn't, the guys were out there right about 1:30 cleaning up stuff, but by 11:30 we were pretty much done with everybody coming through and, and getting stuff off. We had 24, 25 of the large totes of electronics that we filled up and there were even more on the ground that we didn't have a tote to put in.
Wow.
I lost count of the dumpsters, but I believe it was eight or nine that we filled. And that is to count the ones that we filled. Two, we filled two and a half on the pickup days on, um, Thursday and Friday. So we got rid of a lot of stuff in town. And, uh, I know when I got there at 7:30, people lined up, like I couldn't see the end of the line down Shelby. Um, and I asked several of what time they got there and they said they got there about 6:30 in the morning.
They started eight. They started.
They started eight, yes. And there was one gentleman got there at 4:00.
Yeah.
And he, so.
He first.
He was, yes, he was definitely first. He was definitely first, but I do think it went really well and, uh, we had a lot of good help out there. The guys really worked hard in doing that and, uh, Sam's guy, truck and traffic, that worked out really well too. So appreciate that a lot. Uh, next week, we're going to start our fire hydrant flushing, so we're got, uh, notice out on that. You'll probably be hearing about that, so that's getting done. Uh, it just seems like, uh, one pump goes, uh, gets replaced and another one goes down. So if it's not the sanitary plan, it's the water plant, we're, we're replacing, repairing a pump. So that just seems to be ongoing here. We've had several sinkholes lately, got all repaired except two that started, uh, the end of last week on Bell and, uh, we're getting those taken care of. In fact, I got them done today. I don't know if that rain, can finish them or not. Streetscaping there on the south side, working 14th and 15th. Uh, we'll get some concrete board here again, all weather dependent on what can get done. It seems like every day it rains, uh, but, uh, we got the, uh, some storm sewer in there and they'll start putting some of that concrete back here real shortly. I think that's about it. Any questions you might have for me?
Any questions? Okay, fire department, Chief Hillgas.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, three weeks ago, that's answered 201 calls per service. Uh, inspectors, uh, did thorough inspections and follow-ups. Uh, out those calls, uh, I had one, uh, significant that I'd liked to talk. Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, I think the call came in just a couple of minutes before midnight. We got a tone to the structure fire out at Old State Village. Turned out it was, um, bacon, um, trailer that was out there, um, and didn't have any utilities to it. So that next morning, I went around to businesses to get some video surveillance when one of the, uh, establishments called me and said, hey, we got, we got something for you. So, um, it was pretty good video of a guy walking out, throwing a block through the window and sticking his hand in and lighting on fire. So I got with Sam Ryan and this was the same time they had two pretty big cases going on over in the boardhouse, but within nine days, um, the detectives sent and made it arrest on. So, that is guys did, happy with center was, uh, it was nice working with them, bringing that to a flick about result. So, um, we got our Lucas devices, uh, these are the automated CPR devices. We got our Lucas devices, these are the automated CPR devices. The guys did training on that a couple of weeks ago when we put those in service on Monday, the 22nd. They've been busy doing their annual hose testing. This is an N F D A requirement that has to be done every year and we, they got it, all our hose tested. Also did their EMS and park training, had the simulator, air path simulator here last week, doing rescues out of that airplane. I've been busy, we're having two big changes talking about next year to our, when I, the guys do a report, I send them to what is called the National Fire Incident Reporting System, BIFRS. That is changing to, I don't even know what this stands for, N E I R, as I'm guessing it's the National Emergency Incident Recording System. So there's all kinds of changes that we're gonna have to be doing with our recording software. I'm trying to get on top of that before it rolls out in January. And then OSHA is making a lot of changes to the way fire departments do this. And it's caused a lot of uproar. The document is 600 some pages. I've been trying to go through that and not fall asleep. For the most part, we are doing, we already do the majority of these changes, a lot of it's documented. S O P is, S O G is written on certain situations. But there, if all these changes occur, I'm very concerned what that's gonna do to volunteer agencies. So, but just trying to stay on top of those. Been a busy few weeks.
Jeff, on that, I've been reading a little bit on that, the public comment period goes till June 1st. So if there's, I hope that people, especially smaller volunteer departments are posting those objections.
There are, there are several people, you know, I thought about, you know, posting, lined up to groups like the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association, the I have, they're requesting ninety, an additional 90 days. Because, so June, June 1st was when the first 90 days was up. So it would have been March, when this guy landed in everybody's lap. And trying to go through 600 pages in 90 days is, is pretty tough. So they're asking for a misstatement is what the main push is, right? Yeah, there's, there's a lot, a lot of changes. And Illinois is not an OSHA state, but the Illinois Department of Labor has adopted, and there's a term there, you might know that, but they've adopted OSHA's language for what the Illinois Department of Labor, so effectively making us have to follow OSHA's rule. There's, there's a legal term for.
Okay, I believe you. I believe you. I think it's OSHA standards, right? And that's a term, standards, adopt the standards?
It could be, I don't know, even though we're not an OSHA state.
Next would be the Mattoon Police Department, chief Gaines.
While I messed up and forgot, it's been three weeks since we last had, but I've got two weeks, four, two weeks, we had 1,083 calls for service and 70 arrests. This whole month, guys are gonna be busy. Every Tuesday of this month, we're doing our quarterly in-house training. It's what keeps us all certified by the state. We're fortunate enough to have the training facility we have and to have the in-house trainers to do that quarterly and it keeps us up on our certificates without having to send guys away. And it doesn't cost a thing. We schedule us out at the start of the year, so works out real good. But we'll be busy doing that this month. Prouting Broadway downtown Mattoon was a mess the last time, I think a couple of weeks ago. People doing burnouts and there was some traffic stops made and there had to be two or three cops there just because people were getting awfully irate with the cops out there. So we've worked Kevin Hamilton, he's put something on his face and fade, we put something on ours, we are assigning officers for overtime out there. And all they're gonna do is sit there on Broadway, tell that to pencil. So to get that out of control, I'm sure you've already seen them burn out or stop off. But usually takes a couple of times of people getting stopped and pulled over. I know Ken sure doesn't want to see a cop doing in. People get out of control, we're gonna help them try and bring some of those erratic drivers back in. That's all I got.
Good deal. Yeah, you, you noticed that the fire department gave you a nice pat on the back. I didn't. Do you recall that?
Yeah, they're all right.
They're all right. That's good. That's fine, good.
I have a nice feeling.
All right, so. Next is arts and tourism. Do we have anything?
I believe Angelia's online.
Okay, Angelia?
Yeah, so we have a Fourth of July meeting on Thursday to get Coles County fireworks final plans made. We have almost full vendor spots for Bagel Fest. Our next Bagel Bite slash Mattoon Made event will be May 17th, and that's with Jindo. We'll have music and food and all, and of course, that's the festival district as well. And we are working on the beginning preparations for Downtown Lights. And then also Garden Fest is this upcoming weekend, the 11th, and that's in Lidle Park.
Anything else, Angelia?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Angelia?
I did.
Yes.
Get one thing, Jeff here, we both forgot it, but we're getting the Mattoon Police Fireman Softball game going again.
Okay.
So that'll be fun. I think it's later in September, is what they're trying to say. Yeah, they're doing it, doing it, it's a lot of something. They're doing it for Relay for Lives, so the money they raise will, will go. Thank you. Minutes.
I retired a few years ago.
What's that in September?
It was, and then they moved it to August because of their fiscal year. So it's usually the first part of August before school starts, or sometimes it's right second or third week.
Regardless, the loving rate is just gonna be, it's always a fun time, so I'd like to see that one again.
It's good.
We both have some collegiate level baseball players. Yeah, that's how the conversation started when I said, yeah. Oh yeah, we're even with you, we got some collegiate baseball players. So you're on. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
All right. Anything, anything else over there? Thanks for your report though, Angelia. And next is community development, Alex.
All right, so I'm working on beating Kyle's home record record. We have six demolitions coming up next week. He's only done seven in one year, I think was his max, so I'm trying to get past that. But yeah, we got six coming up, just waiting on Ameren to tell us that everything's been disconnected, water lines have already been pulled and everything. From there, we have four more in the pipeline, so I'm really confident on that record there. And we actually have 11 more repair, demolish letters going out as well, which I'd probably imagine eight of these will probably be tear downs. So, you know, just really good stuff. Also, we are issuing four more citations. I want for a friend of ours who, I'm not gonna name at this meeting, but I'd like you to serve him with that. And yeah, moving forward from there, thank you all for approving the AusLad bids. So, you know, no more bidding on that, really excited to be done with that. It was a lot of work, but we got it done. John and Whitney have been great. From there, I met today with Evan from Jesper Holdings with somebody named Pam Schalhorn, who works for Illinois Extension. We're gonna be hosting some workshops on downtown revitalization, reversing the exodus, like youth leaving the community, and another workshop on developing a creative economy. So like, you know, trying to foster artists, things like that in the community. She is literally the top resource almost in the state of Illinois for things like that. So we're really excited to bring her down into the community and kind of get some insight on how we can help better improve Mattoon. And from there, also brainstorming some projects for the new RISE and RDMS grants that came out from D C E O. So those are grants specifically for downtown buildings, where you can build new ones, you can rehabilitate old ones. It's anywheres from a quarter million to $2 million. That is kind of able to be the maximum amount awarded to a project out of a total pool of $20 million. We have already done the RISE planning grant thanks to Coles Together. And, you know, initially they set out trying to figure out, hey, you know, are we able to expand our manufacturing capacity to specialize in aerospace and have all of our local manufacturers do some side work on aerospace related manufacturing needs? And their answer was no, we need more people in the community, we need more housing. That was their main finding from that study. And so this is a RISE implementation grant, so we can take that study from Coles Together, use it as a basis for this grant, because this is an implementation grant. So we could use this to create mixed use development downtown that helps us have at least 51% of the project have some form of housing associated with it. So really neat opportunity for us, trying to kind of narrow things down. And I am looking into, you know, the specifics of what the private side of that could be. Though I know for a fact they're only going to have the ability to award one per community. So it really just depends who's gonna be the main applicant. And final thing from there is last week I attended the Illinois Tiff and Enterprise Association Joint Conference. It was phenomenal, I learned a bunch and, you know, really feel like we're gonna be able to bring a lot of what we learned back here to help make developer, developers kind of make development a little bit more possible here in Mattoon. So that's all I got.
Any questions? Lot, a lot of things still going on. Now we go to comments council, start with Dave Fox.
See you, thank you.
Okay, then we go to Jim Lawson.
A couple of things, thank you, Mayor. I was contacted and I have a meeting tomorrow with a member of the community that would like to discuss playground access and playground equipment for the disabled. So I've got some information from Kurt, so I want to meet with her and pretty much that focus is gonna be on Peterson Lawson and possibly the new playground equipment at the beach at Lake Mattoon. Pickleball courts, thanks to Dave Clark, the first two layers of the coating are done. And weather permitting, they'll be here maybe next Tuesday, Wednesday, two, two and a half days. Everybody do your sundance. So we could maybe have this project completed by week from Friday. It's our goal, right, Dave? We're all in agreement on that, right, Dave?
We have to set up and finish up.
Yeah, we're getting, every day people call, when's it ready, when's it ready? And then the last thing, just got a follow-up meeting with Heather and AJ out at, at the lake. We're getting, we're getting issues with people coming out to Paradise and dumping, dumping stuff. And actually AJ drives, drives around the lake a couple of times a week, picks up stuff, whether it's furniture, trees, whatever, tree limbs, trash pickup. He walks the trails, the new trails that you put in out there, he walks those every two weeks. So we're, we're gonna kind of monitor that and then see what kind of options that we can put into place that will serve as deterrent. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, sir? Sandy Graven?
I just want to compliment Dave following in my footsteps and helping with the.
Hey.
No, other than that, nothing.
Great. Any questions for Sandy?
Good.
How many mice and snakes?
No snakes.
Mice?
Commissioner Phipps?
Might, might been a few mice, but anyway, no, I appreciate, just want to say thanks to Dave, Dave and his staff for, for the cleanup day. AJ Cobble was there, Rick Pemberton, Thomas Oatman, Austin Hildenberg and Ethan Carman were also, were the, you know, they, they humped it. Rick, of course, was kind of in charge and leading the direction of everything along with Dave and then, but AJ Cobble was there and he's been there, he's been volunteering since he was a boy scout out there, and he, and he wouldn't miss it. So he really enjoys that. And of course, thanks to Sam's group too for direct traffic. Great work at the Lake Mattoon on your AusLad improvements. I drove around out there, I guess it was earlier this week, and boy, that's gonna make a change, that's gonna make a big difference out there. Looking forward to that whole lake progressing in the next number of years, so. Let's see. Last couple of things, I've got a couple of citizen issues I'm dealing with as far as nuisance, people operating commercial businesses out of a possible residential area. I'll need to get with Alex on and then, and then, then we're working on possibly a dumpster ordinance that contractors or people might be renovating their home or a flipped property and they're keeping a dumpster there for months on end. And other than that, other than that, that's, that's all I got.
Any, any questions? Just real quick, Dave Clark and I have been working on some information for the state of Illinois related to IDOT construction along the, or near the sports complex. We're looking for some relief on some, not only control of traffic and improvement, so we don't have as quite many accidents out there with all the additional traffic displanning. So we've got a meeting in Springfield on Thursday, and I think there's three or four of us going up, Senator Rose will be there with us and see what we can get accomplished there. That's about all I've got. Have you questions for me offhand? If none, anybody like to make any final comments or make any motions?
Mayor? I'd like to make most adjourned.
Okay, we get a second?
I'll second, I'm ready.
Mr. Phipps, and let's do roll call, see if we get any votes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Graven? No. Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Me adjourned, thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Do that.
I was gonna say no, it's just a while.
Yeah. Yeah. You're gonna love this. Ready? 28, 21, did Marshall have?
Okay.
Well. 28, 21, one of the Lewis's.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.